Hello, hello. Will the March 14, 2016, Wissahickens School District Board of Directors meeting, please come to order? Ms. Durkosh, will you please roll call the board?
Thank you, Dr. Becker. Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mrs. David? Mrs. D Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank? Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff? Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Dr. Becker?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First, we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the infinite justus for all.
Sorry? Welcome to all our guests and visitors to our regularly scheduled public board meeting of the Wissahickens School District Board of Directors. Also, happy Pi Day. As a note, the board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters related to personnel and negotiations. In addition, the board members met for a retreat on March 5th. Next on our agenda is honors, recognitions, and celebrations, Dr. Chrisfield.
Thank you. Yes, we have two items tonight, and both will be celebrations. One was rescheduled from a previous weather-affected meeting. So you'll note on the agenda that both of them are actually going to, coincidentally, make it take a stab at showing everyone how comprehensively and how valuably we integrate technology into all sorts of different subject matters. It's not a standalone effort. It's not a something that is done in isolation, but rather, it's an integrated tool into all of our subjects. And so the first presentation tonight is some friends from nearby Lower Gwinnett Elementary. And to introduce her team tonight is Ms. Nikki West, principal.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm going to hold this because I'm short, and my arms are also short, so. Good evening, Dr. Chrisfield, Mr. Abermont, Dr. Becker, all members of the board, and members of our community. It's my pleasure to have brought with me some of our teachers and students who will present highlights of their experiences in teaching and learning. One of the things that we recognize at Lower Gwinnett is that learning exists beyond the walls of Lower Gwinnett Elementary. And so tonight, I've asked for my friends behind me to specifically share and also involve you in the experience of Skyping. At Lower Gwinnett, we've worked with particularly social studies and the integration of technology. And so, without further ado, I'm going to introduce my friends behind me. First, I have Ms. Carrie Hager, who is our third-grade teacher, along with some of her students. They'll be speaking with you about Mystery Skype. Next, I have Mrs. Crystal Hickey, who will be presenting with some of our fifth-grade students, and they will share World Wonder Day, which also involves Skype. But before we begin with those presentations, first, I'd like to invite Mrs. Susan Degnan, our technology developer, who's worked with not only the classroom teachers, but their students, and also this principal throughout the course of the year, in introducing the concept of Skyping and integrating it with our curriculum, and also in creating the presentation for you tonight. So with that, I'm going to invite Susan to join me up at the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, one of the things that we've been working on in all of the elementary schools, as well as the middle school and the high school, with my counterpart, Diane Kraus, we've been working to go beyond our walls and make global connections for our students to collaborate with other classrooms. So, so far this year, we've done that through Mystery Skypes and through World Wonder Day, which our students and staff from Lower Gwinnett are here to talk to you about. We are also currently investigating virtual field trips and guest speakers through Skype. Those are still in the planning stages, but we are working on those things. So through Mystery Skype and World Wonder Day, our students have demonstrated 21st-century skills such as creating, collaborating, critical thinking, and communicating. Our students were eager, they were engaged, and they were excited. So what is Mystery Skype? Mystery Skype is a way for us to not only learn about where we are in the world, but also to learn about others, because it gives us a chance to practice our geography skills, our questioning skills, some deductive reasoning, and it also allows students to then share and learn a little bit about the culture with the students that we make those connections with. So I have a brief video clip here for you.
Mystery Skype is an educational game invented by teachers played by two classrooms on Skype. The aim of the game is to build cultural awareness, critical thinking skills, and geography skills by guessing the location of the other classroom through a series of yes and no questions.
Are y'all ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Do you live in Georgia?
Yeah!
Yeah!
It is suitable for all age groups from kindergarten through high school students, and can be adapted for any subject area. Be prepared to go on an amazing educational adventure that your students will not only remember forever, they will talk about it for days and ask you, "When can you do another one?"
Okay, so that brings us to tonight. We've scheduled a Mystery Skype for you to participate in tonight. So, we have students from 3H and 5H who are going to kind of be your guides and walk you through that. So we have some materials to pass out before showtime at 7:40-ish.
Is this a test? Are we going to be graded on this?
You will be excited, you will be engaged, and you will be eager to learn, I promise.
Yeah, I got that. But are we going to be graded on this?
I'm just interested, are we going to be speaking to another board somewhere, or...
By chance, do you guys have any classes where they bake goods, cake, cookies? Because we'll be happy to, we'll be happy to do that one, too.
I will give you a little hint. I will give you a little hint. Our partner, we don't normally disclose this to the students, but they are somewhere in the United States, so that's why you have a United States map. The other person that we'll be Skyping with does not know where we are, so in case you need to brush up on your Pennsylvania skills, we have that on the back. We have these maps, so they are laminated. You can use your dry erase markers to cross off any states based on questions that you might ask. The questions that we ask involve those that would elicit yes or no answers. So it's basically 20 questions and geography all rolled into one. Okay? Do you have any questions before we start?
Is it just state or city and state?
Based on our time constraints right now, we're just trying to find out their state. When we do this in the classroom, we do try and get the largest major city that we're closest to.
So where's the camera? Are they going to see us?
So, they, they will not see you. We have some greeters that...
Oh, okay.
Yes, one of the things that we rely on is the web cam and our laptops.
Got it. Because I didn't do my hair today, so I was concerned.
Okay. Okay, our partner is away for a moment, so we have a few minutes. Let's hopefully she, she'll be back. She knows, she's expecting our call. Yeah, she's, she's ready to go. We're just waiting for her.
I'm going to go when this starts, yeah.
Yep.
That's busted. Probably not, they're out of...
Do you know where she lives?
I do know where she is.
She doesn't know where you live.
She does not know.
Are you her friend right now?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Oh, wait, how did, then how does she not know where you live?
Um, yeah. Yep. All right, so while we're waiting for Ms. Ruffcorn, we will continue on here, just... All right, so Ms. Hager's going to talk a little bit about Mystery Skype in her classroom.
So I'm going to talk about the benefits of Mystery Skyping in the classroom. Some of the benefits are that it promotes collaborative thinking and communication skills among the students. We have applied all of the geography skills from social studies this year, especially using the program that we're piloting, the Harcourt Program, and the use of technology in the classroom, as well as promoting problem-solving and critical-thinking skills. And it's really a lot of interactive learning between the students. The students have worked really hard to polish their questioning skills in order to reason where they're located in the United States. And it's amazing how we've now Skyped three times, and ironically, we've won all three times, so a little praise to them. But they really have done a nice job working with their friends in the classroom, as well as working with the map and the skills that we've learned this year.
All right, let's see. All right, she's good to go. Are you ready?
Hello?
Ask if she can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Good evening. We're so excited to Mystery Skype with you. This is our school board's first time Skyping. Good luck.
Bye.
I will start with the first question. Does your state border an ocean?
No, my state does not border an ocean. And so it should be my turn then?
Yes.
Is your state west of the Mississippi River?
We're thinking.
We're thinking.
No.
All right.
Can I ask her a question? Hi, is it, is it still cold where you live?
At, at times, yes. Other times, no.
Note to self, ask a better question next time.
Is your state landlocked?
Is it landlocked? Oh, no, we're not.
We're thinking.
Are we landlocked? No, we're not landlocked.
No.
Yes, yes or no?
No.
Okay, do we have another question?
Oh, I have one. I have one.
Does your state have Rocky Mountains?
If they say yes, that's up to you.
Do the Rocky Mountains run through your state?
No, the Rocky Mountains do not run through my state. Does your state border the Atlantic Ocean?
No.
No.
Oh, I think she heard.
Are all four sides of your shape straight lines?
No, all four sides of my state are not composed of straight lines. Does your state end with a vowel?
It does begin with a vowel.
Yes.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure, I can. Does your state end with a vowel?
Yes.
I think these are good questions.
Does your state make good barbecue?
I would say not especially, no. Is your state Ohio?
No.
Hold on, do you have a question over there?
Does your state begin with a vowel?
Hang on one second.
Does your state border Canada?
No, my state does not border Canada.
When you're ready.
Is your state Indiana?
No. Does your state begin with a vowel?
Yes, my state does begin with a vowel. Does your state have two words in its name?
No. Does your state have four letters? Does your state have four letters?
Yes, my state does have four letters. Are you ready to make a guess?
I'll buy make a guess for $500, please. I'll let somebody else guess. Go ahead.
Is your state Utah?
No, my state is not Utah.
Darn.
No. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll let you guys go because I can hear it.
Is your state Iowa?
Yes, my state is Iowa, very. And would you like to tell me where you lovely folks are located?
We're located in Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, how very exciting. I've not been to Pennsylvania today.
Have you ever been to a school board meeting?
I've been to school board meetings in my own district. This is the first not-my-district school board.
There you go, well, welcome.
Thank you for Mystery Skyping with our board. I hope everyone had an excellent time, even though it's...
Thanks very much for inviting me. I've had a lovely time. Have a great evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Bye-bye.
Very good.
No.
That was very good.
Part of the disease is Des Moines.
That's why some next time they invite the cooking class. What, Horace?
Yep.
Very good, that was very nice, thank you.
I think that she should have said she couldn't answer that, then we'd really know. Oh, the school board meetings are such fun.
I certainly do. Yep. So it's impressive to see who remembers their geography and who's still working on it a little bit. It's always good to know. Keep that in mind. Before we continue with the fifth graders, I would like to just briefly thank and introduce them, if they would stand for me. Ms. Ellie Werner, could I have you stand up? Just wave at everybody over there. Dovida Srau, could you wave at everybody? And Mr. Charles Lee. These are all students from Ms. Hager's. They're a great class. Thank you, you can have a seat. Next, I'm going to introduce our fifth graders with Mrs. Crystal Hickey. We have Ethan Werner, Ellie's big brother. We have Jada Johnson, and we have Brian Mait.
Good evening, I'm Mrs. Hickey, and these are my kids. We did World Wonder Day, which is a day that's all across the world, and anybody's allowed to participate. They are given a class that we're paired up with, and a general topic, which this year it was food banks. So, we had no clue who we'd be paired with until about a month before the actual date, and the students were grouped according to their interests, and they created whatever they wanted and researched on their own outlet. And so, I have three of the five groups here. It was great because they researched and shared the different findings in different areas that they had interest and excelled in, and used Skype to share these findings. They worked collaboratively and learned about their own needs, where they get food from locally, how it gets to stores around us, the availability of it to us, our community, and people in the community that you might not be aware of, and the limited resources and scarcity of those resources. So they also learned about scarcity, and then also how it's distributed, and were able to participate in the Lower Gwinnett Thanksgiving Food Drive and help out with that. So, one of the groups was Health and Phys Ed, and they worked with our gym teacher, Mr. Jackson, to create a little exercise routine to show which students ate healthy. And there was one student that didn't eat as nutritionally in his act, and showed what kind of foods were healthy and which weren't, and how that affects the body. We had a science group that, I was floored, they actually went and learned about biogenetics, and took it that way, and learned all about genetically modifying crops and what it does, and, you know, that's one thing, it raised the level, because I never would have thought of teaching the fifth graders that. So that was cool that they went that route, and then I have some that are here, so this is Ethan, and he was in the music group, which again, they astounded me with their abilities.
Hi, I'm Ethan Werner, and I did my World Wonders Day project on music. I worked with my music teacher, Mrs. Giyama, and four other students. We picked out the song Budapest and remixed it to tell people why they should donate to local food banks. My friends and I really enjoyed this wonderful project because we had a great time, we got to choose what song to use, and for remixing, and we created our own lyrics. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Jada. For World Wonder Day, I was in the art group. In the art group, we made a replica of a food bank with the help of Mr. Williamson, the art teacher. We tried to include all the things that a real food bank would have. We also made a banner to hang during the Skype to show our World Wonder Day spirit. This is the food bank that we made for World Wonder Day, and inside of it is all the things that you would see in a real food bank. And we, we made these, these are the shopping carts and the aisles, and this is the kitchen where they make the food and the pantry.
Hello, my name is Brian Mait. For World Wonder Day, I was in the Language Arts and Technology Group. My group worked with Mrs. Degnan to design a commercial to advertise a school food drive that we held shortly after that. There was a list of food that people could bring in for the drive, and anyone could bring anything on the list in, to let you know the drive was successful. Thank you.
So, to bring this to a close very quickly, as you can see, at Lower Gwinnett, social studies, or any curriculum area for that matter, is connected very much to our use of technology. Engaging is the word that always comes to mind. It also allows our students to promote and share their creativity, as evidenced by both our fifth graders and our third graders. It also, in my estimation, as I got to observe some of the Mystery Skyping and also World Wonder Day, it helps them to really pull together reading and writing, math computation and application, but also active listening and speaking, all of which are crucial to our students' learning. But most importantly, as you can tell from tonight, and I hope you got to experience, learning is truly fun. It is something that they enjoy. And being able to see their peers across the country and see that they are very similar in so many ways, while they may live in different spaces, was really quite fun and very important. And so, with that, I want to thank everyone for their attention for the evening, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any board questions?
Not so much a question, as a compliment to you and your entire staff and your students, or the fantastic projects you've been involved in. I taught social studies about 10,000 years ago, long before Skype, and I don't think their television had been quite invented by that time. But it's, using technology in your class has always been a goal of mine and the board today, and you guys have taken it to the ultimate. I want to congratulate all of you, and the parents as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a wonderful presentation, and great job to all the students and teachers, really.
Okay, thank you. And the, the second presentation tonight will build on that theme. By the way, that's, I hope everybody noticed, among other things, the cross-curricular partnerships that existed. We heard reference to art teachers and music teachers, and when you do that for students, you make the learning meaningful, lasting and meaningful. It's a really very impressive job. Our second presentation tonight comes from, to us from Stony Creek, and it's a pleasure to introduce the principal, Dr. Kevin McEnany, to introduce his team of students and staff. of teaching the 5th graders that. So that was cool that they went that route, and then I have some that are here, so this is Ethan, and he was in the music group, which again, they astounded me with their abilities.
Hi, I'm Ethan Werner, and I did my World Wonders Day project on music. I worked with my music teacher, Mrs. Giyama, and four other students. We picked out the song Budapest and remixed it to tell people why they should donate to local food banks. My friends and I really enjoyed this wonderful project, because we had a great time, we got to choose what song to use, and for remixing, and we created our own lyrics. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Jada. For World Wonder Day, I was in the art group. In the art group, we made a replica of a food bank with the help of Mr. Williamson, the art teacher. We tried to include all the things that a real food bank would have. We also made a banner to hang during the Skype to show our World Wonder Day spirit. This is the food bank that we made for World Wonder Day, and inside of it is all the things that you would see in a real food bank. And, we made these, these are the shopping carts and the aisles, and this is the kitchen where they make the food, and the pantry.
Hello, my name is Brian Mait. For World Wonder Day, I was in the Language Arts and Technology Group. My group worked with Mrs. Degnan to design a commercial to advertise a school food drive that we held shortly after that. There was a list of food that people could bring in for the drive, and anyone could bring anything on the list in, to let you know the drive was successful. Thank you.
So, to bring this to a close very quickly, as you can see, at Lower Guinean, social studies, or any curriculum area for that matter, is connected very much to our use of technology. Engaging is the word that always comes to mind. It also allows our students to promote and share their creativity, as evidenced by both our 5th graders and our 3rd graders. It also, in my estimation, as I got to observe some of the mystery skyping and also World Wonder Day, it helps them to really pull together reading and writing, math computation and application, but also active listening and speaking, all of which are crucial to our students' learning. But most importantly, as you can tell from tonight, and I hope you got to experience, learning is truly fun, it is something that they enjoy. And being able to see their peers across the country, and see that they are very similar in so many ways, while they may live in different spaces, was really quite fun and very important. And so, with that, I want to thank everyone for their attention for the evening, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Are there any board questions?
Yeah, not so much a question, as a compliment to you and your entire staff, and your students, or the fantastic projects you've been involved in. I taught social studies about 10,000 years ago, long before Skype, and I don't think their television had been quite invented by that time. But, it's, using technology in your class has always been a goal of mine and the board today, and you guys have taken it to the ultimate. I want to congratulate all of you, and the parents as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, that was a wonderful presentation, and great job to all the students and teachers, really.
Okay, thank you, and the second presentation tonight will build on that theme. By the way, that's, I hope everybody noticed, among other things, the cross-curricular partnerships that existed. We heard reference to art teachers and music teachers, and when you do that for students, you make the learning meaningful, lasting and meaningful. It's a really very impressive job. Our second presentation tonight comes to us from Stony Creek, and it's a pleasure to introduce the principal, Dr. Kevin McEnany, to introduce his team of students and staff.
Good evening. On behalf of the Stony Creek faculty, and the students of Stony Creek, it is our intention this evening to provide you with an understanding of an instructional tool that has great potential for the classroom. Mrs. Sedowski, a 4th grade teacher at Stony Creek Elementary School, uses this application in her classroom on a regular basis. She's here this evening to present the Flickr, I'm sorry, the Plicker, Plicker application, and its use in the classroom. Several of our students, and several of our students come on up, you make them up now, come on, come on. Several of our students are here to share their perspective of Plicker, and to work with the board members in a demonstration of the Plicker app. Mrs. Sedowski.
Okay, can I take this out? Okay, great. This year, a real focus in August, when elementary came back, was differentiation, as it usually is, and specifically guided math groups, where we would get data from our students and be able to develop groups so that we could differentiate instruction. And, in August, I thought and thought about this, about how I would get this information that I could use in real time. And, I didn't find a solution that was, that made me happy, that excited me. And then Mike Mandell, who teaches at Stony Creek, said, "Have you ever tried Plickers?" And I said, "Oh, I tried the Clickers, they're a pain in the neck to try." And he said, "No, not, not Clickers, Plickers, did you try Plickers?" And I said, "No." So, he showed me how to do it, and we use it ongoing in our classroom. Plickers is an online tool and a cellphone app that allows a teacher to gather useful real-time data from students. Now, at the middle school and high school, this may not seem like such a big deal, but at elementary, we don't have the one-to-one laptops that they have. So for us, to log into a website to get that kind of data takes some real time, and Plickers is a way to get that data very, very quickly for use in the classroom. It's quick and easy setup, that's one reason that I liked it. I was introduced to it one day, the next day it was up and running in my room. I set up a class, and I can, if I taught at the middle school, or whatever, I could set up several classes. I could set up, you know, first-period English, second-period English, as I have right now, our demonstration class set up. And what they do is, they assign, in our class, students, and each student gets a card assigned to them. In our classroom, they're in file folders so that they can use them at any time. Yeah, and it looks like this. And each student's, you guys can hold them up, yeah. Each student's card is different, so it's kind of like a barcode. And, well, I'll show you how they use them in just a second. Okay, so, each card here has, and it's very light, so the students can't tell what other students are responding for their answers. For example, up here at the top here is D. If students want to respond D as their answer, they hold their card with D up. If they want to respond C, there's a little tiny C there, and they respond with C up, so on, so forth. B, A, okay. So these are multiple choice questions, which also got me thinking a lot about how I could develop the best question sets that I could, which was a whole other thing that I worked on. So I can set up my library of questions. I used it at back-to-school night, so these are some of, and ELA, and math, the school board presentation, science, all the different, I can group them, and then within those, I can group them according to unit and according to lesson. These are some of the questions, for example, in my everyday math, Unit 4, 11 is a composite number, it can be a true false question like that, or this is a multiple of six, and they choose among a set. Yes, so, here's the way that it works. Now, many of you are either older than me, my age about, so this technology boggled my mind when we did it. What happens is, I get my phone ready to scan the question, and the kids hold up their answers, pretend you're holding up your answers, and I scan it, I scan their answers like that, and it shows up on the smartboard like that. You're going to see this happen in just a second. And, this is our video. This was my class demonstrating, they were very seriously demonstrating it here. And that's the way I see it in my phone, so. Yes. Okay, so then, it pops up this way, where I could show how students individually answered the questions, if it was something that we wanted to poll each other about, I could show their answers, or I could poll, I could bring it up like this in a graph, where they could see how many chose B, C, and then we could analyze why they made the choices that they made. And I use the information for differentiation, extension activities, and remediation. I can, they just, the Plickers system just recently upgraded, where I can now see the data according to student, where I couldn't do that before. So, people must be using it, they're making changes to the site. Okay, so, I'm going to show you how it works with the students, if we could just. Okay, so this is the way it looks in my classroom when we start. And then I get my phone ready. Guys, ready? Okay, now, remember, there's someone who taught social studies for a long time, in our, and this is the way it pops up, right here. What is your favorite subject in school? A, math, ELA, reading, writing, social studies, science. Again, keep in mind. Ready? Whoops, oh, here we go. Andrew can't get it flat. There you go. Yeah, for some reason, they're not as, did I get you? There we go. Okay, so, here we are, and that's, they're in. And then, I can show the graph. Oh, yeah, someone, yeah. Math, quite a few people liking math tonight, but, you know. They kept it in mind. ELA, reading, writing, social studies, science. Yeah, so, so that's the way it works. So, isn't that amazing? It really is amazing. And especially with the fact that we don't have the laptops, it's amazing that I can use something like this in my classroom so readily, and just get the information and be able to run with it. So when, you know, I choose some questions from, let's say, the math, I'm saying that because guided math is a new concept, newer concept for us this year. I choose something that I need for them to be able to do, I check it, and then some students stay with me, and some students go and do activities, some are extended, so on, so forth. But, we want you to try it today, so students, can you bring around the Plickers? Yes, do you want to, thanks.
I'll take a Plickers.
Yeah, there should be enough.
You know you're getting old when you have to put on your glasses.
Right. It's pretty light, though, I mean, I will give you that.
Got it. I hope these are easy.
Yes, there should be 20. You can, if they're all like on the carpet, flat, yeah, sorry. Okay, just put them, put them. Okay.
This is really cool, by the way.
It is really cool, isn't it? Okay, so, before you guys do your simulation, I'm going to have the students just tell you, we brainstormed our ideas about Plickers, so they're just going to tell you a little bit about the way that they feel about it. So we'll start off here with Nihah.
It helps see if you know your math, or any other subject.
Hi, my name is Sierra. I like Plickers because it tells the teacher what I'm having trouble with, so she can help me.
My name is Richard, and I like Plickers because it's fun, but you're learning at the same time, and it saves time and money.
My name is Jackson. I like Plickers because it is a cool way to teach students, and an easier way to test students. It makes me feel smart when I get the answers right.
My name is Sean, and I like Plickers because I do not get embarrassed to answer an answer wrong, because no one knows who got it wrong or right, and the teacher does not tell anyone.
My name is Andrew, and it's amazing to see how other people answer, plus, we don't need a lot of paper.
Hi, my name is Loni, and I like Plickers because it's fun and interesting to see how the technology works.
Okay, so now, we're going to find out, what are your plans for after the school board meeting? A, I hope to get a good sleep soon after the meeting. B, I think I'll try to get something to eat. C, I have some work I have to do. D, I will do something recreational. So now you hold it up with A, B, C, or D facing the ceiling? Thank you.
I'll repeat that for the telecast. When the students are on the rug, it's easy, when they're all in one place, that she can gather them all at once pretty quickly. We try to instruct the students not to wrinkle their papers.
Do you get some sort of indication that it captured it?
As each student is, as it's captured, it see that the student's checkmark will go off, so you know how many students have answered.
And here's what our board is doing afterwards. Many are getting sleep, we have some people getting something to eat, some working still, and something recreational. And I have one last one to do. The kids are saying they want to do more, but. Okay, so, what is the most important part of the Wissickin School District? A, the student body and the families of the district, or, the distinguished faculty, staff, and administration, or, the school board, or, all of the above. We all work together toward excellence.
I just want to ask, is this again anonymous, please? Just in case, later, perhaps?
We'll see. Yeah, it's anonymous. That's the beauty of Plickers, is that no one can really tell what you're answering. I'm not getting that one. Okay, and, here we are. I know, well, see, the kids have it flat, they have a flat board that it's on, so this is a little, and let's see what... We have here, a couple people, the student body and families of the district, and we all work together towards excellence. Right, okay, and that's really what Plickers is about. I just, this technology, I think, is amazing, it's a really good option for teachers in the classroom to use. So glad I ran into it, it really changes the way that I use exit slips, I use, you know, my closure activity, it's amazing, so. Any questions?
Yeah, so, yeah, I have a, I do, I have a question.
If we can have our students take a nice bow for it.
I do have a question.
Thank you.
I don't know if they can hear me. I've got a quick question for you, so each of these designs is student-specific.
Yes, it is. And it can go up to like 40, you can have 40 in your class, and yes, they're specific. And what's really neat about it is, you know, I do a lot of slate and expo marker work in my room, you know, where they write on the slates and they hold up their answers. But this is really very telling, because they can't tell what other people are answering. So, it's a really good indication of what they know and do.
And you said a recent update was that you can actually now aggregate by student.
Yes, yes, which is a shame, because my, all of my data from the beginning of the year isn't like that, but next year I'll start that way. So, it is so cool, so.
And where's this data stored, in your laptop?
Well, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to really look at that aspect. It's, right now, I can access it on the Plickers site, but I'm sure that, if not now, at some point it'll be downloadable onto my, yeah, and probably printable report.
Melissa, this is so awesome. I can see how quickly you can find out, hey, I have my small group for this.
Right, lots of uses for it. You know, I started out with math, because it seemed like the natural way to go, but then, with language arts, it was really great saying, you know, here is the theme, you know, which one of these supports the theme, you know, and then, you know, there are so many uses for it.
Thank you.
How much does the application cost?
It's free, at this time. At this time, it's free, so it's fantastic.
Right, and I think if we had to pay for this, this would not be a bad investment, because, not for testing, but know where your class is instantaneously, is the most incredible value a teacher could have. And, how did you hear about this, you said?
Mike Mandell, he is a learning support teacher at Stony Creek, he was using it in his small group, which, really, it is designed for a large group, you know, so he was using it with a small group, and he was excited to be able to use it with a larger group too. So, it's amazing. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may thank Mrs. Sedowski, all of our students that are here this evening, and their parents for bringing them, but I think you can realize just the importance and the power and the possibilities that are available to us through the Plicker application. Also, I think that when you're in the classroom, you'll see how excited the students are. They get immediate feedback on, they know their answers are correct, they know if they're on target, if they're not, but also, it's helpful to help the teacher in understanding which students may need some additional help. I do need to make one admission, when I sent the information to Tina Durkosh, I told her Plicker was spelt without the E, just like Flickr and Tumblr. That's the way I had seen it at one time, but if you saw the presentation, it was spelt with the E, so that's an internet mistake on my part. So I don't want Tina, Tina's never made a mistake in all the years I've ever met her, didn't want this to be her first, so that was my mistake. And thank you very much for understanding and listening to what the students had to present, and what's going on in the classrooms around the district, but at Stony Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have reported the student board representatives. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Well, it's been quite an exciting time recently at Wissickin High School. Thankfully, we have a lot of good things to report. In particular, our robotics students recently debuted their new 2016 robot at a recent competition. Our team placed in the top 10 across the nation, and was also given an award for their sportsmanship and kindness, and I think that really reveals a lot about what that team brings to the table. Our team helped another team rebuild their robot the evening before the competition, and after that, that team ran into, after that team had run into a major issue. Our team was also featured in the Wissickin High School team at Philadelphia 76ers Home Game, highlighting STEM programs. Thirty, sorry, sir? 31 WHS students participated in the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science competition, and 12 of those students placed first overall. Also, the No Place for Hate Door decorating contest that we recently held, which highlighted the themes of paying it forward and diversity awareness, was a huge success, and the high school is now decorated with the door of each homeroom decorated by the students in a way to celebrate diversity in our school. WIS Watch has now been made available on our website. This initiative was the brainchild of two WHS students who wanted to make information about co-curricular opportunities readily available for all other students. I would also like to announce that March is Youth Art Month, and Wissickin- I'd also like to announce that March is Youth Art Month, and Wissahicken High School is celebrating by showing student work on our announcements each day. Additionally, we have WHS student work included in the YIM exhibition in Harrisburg throughout the month. And finally, our Quiz Bowl team placed seventh out of sixteen teams at a recent Montgomery County competition, so that was quite a bit of fun.
Thank you.
Today, I'm delighted to bring you lots of good news about the accomplishments of our student body at the high school. This past weekend, the musical curtains was a huge success, hopefully many of you were able to attend. A round of applause for all of the cast, crew, and Mr. Conahan for the countless hours that they put in to make this performance a success. In the two thousand sixteen National German Exam, one that all students within the German program participated in, we had twenty students placed in the top eighty-fifth percentile or better, what an accomplishment for the program. Additionally, seven WHS students received medals of recognition at the James J. Doyle Oral Proficiency Contest for their skills in world language. Three WHS juniors were recently selected to submit some of their writing to the National Council of Teachers of English Achievement Contest. Meanwhile, four of our own participated in the PMEA Regional Orchestra Contest, and one individual was chosen to play in the PMEA All-State Orchestra. Building on the theme of music, seventeen WHS students recently performed in the one hundred and twenty-three-member Regional Honors Band. The WHS debate team finished third out of a possible thirteen in the championship tournament for the Southeast Pennsylvania Debate League. Another one of our club, clubs, the Future Teachers of America, collected seven hundred and seventy-six books in a recent book drive for the, for the WSD community. Next meeting, I'm sure we'll have even more great achievements to share with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Oh, Mrs. Walsh, I believe you have something to share about the middle?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the Wissahicken Middle School is holding its, uh, blood drive, um, and I'm hoping that we'll give red blood instead of green blood because it's on Saint Patrick's Day. So it's the seventeenth from two to seven PM, um, all those that donate blood will be given green T-shirts, so I hope to see you all there, uh, I think you can check out the website and make an appointment, and I will see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Next, we have public comments, and I have your blue sheets here, uh, this is just a reminder that while we are very appreciative of public comments, it is the board's policy not to engage in dialogue during public comments, but when applicable, the administration will be posting, um, responses and answers on the website. And first up, we have Kathleen Hawke.
Good evening, members of the school board directors, Dr. Chrisfield, Mr. Abamat, and members of the Wissahicken community. My name is Kathleen Hawke and I am a world language teacher at the Wissahicken Middle School. I want to express my deep concern for the students at the middle school. The schedule for next year that has been shown to the staff is going to have our students take eighty minutes of math in a block and eighty minutes of language arts in a block. Language arts is currently ninety minutes because it meshed two academic classes into one several years ago. There used to be a reading course as well as a writing and grammar course at the middle school. These two are taught cohesively in a ninety-minute block. Now they will be losing ten minutes of instruction every day. I am concerned about the results that we will find in our PSSA scores for language arts. That's almost an hour that's lost each week. Every content area except for math will be losing instructional time with this new schedule. I just wonder how this can be beneficial to students. As a professional educator in the Wissahicken School District, I see our mission as one to educate the whole child. Let's be honest and say it like it is, the purpose of this new schedule is so that the Wissahicken School District looks better in our math PSSA scores. It is not to educate the whole child. The seven members of the world language department at the middle school are appalled that the district has decided to discontinue the sixth-grade exploratory language program. I was hired at Wissahicken School District twenty-three years ago to help develop this program, and it has been very successful. By allowing sixth-grade students to explore four different languages, they can make an informed decision as to which language they want to take for all of seventh and eighth grade. During seventh and eighth grade, our students can complete the first high school year of their language. It is this first year which allows students to complete an advanced placement language course in the twelfth grade. That was the original reason for adding the sixth-grade exploratory program. Therefore, it has been highly advantageous to each child. I have results of the Wissahicken survey data that was given in the fall of this year to parents as well as students, um, for world languages. One of the things that concerns me most that I just wanna mention is that over seventeen hundred, uh, student participants stated that the selection of a language was through their sixth-grade exploratory course. That has me concerned if we're going to discontinue this program. I also have found further national studies which indicate that students who stay, who study world languages outperform their peers who don't study world languages in their academic achievement over the years. It has to be continuous. So I, and all of the members of the Wissahicken World Language Program, we respectfully urge you to reconsider keeping the sixth-grade exploratory language program as it does promote academic achievement. And if you want copies of those surveys, I have them here.
Next, we have Joyce England Gordon.
Good evening, I'm Joyce England Gordon, a language arts teacher at the middle school. I've been at the middle school in various positions since nineteen eighty-eight. There have been numerous schedules over the years which have put the needs of the students first. The middle school, uh, schedule does need to change. Presently, it doesn't meet the needs of all of our students with our current curriculum. We have two different schedules within one school, a sixth-grade schedule and a seventh and eighth-grade schedule. There are days when the effectiveness of one schedule negatively impacts the effectiveness of the other, but I do not see how the new proposed schedule for the middle school will work. We are not dealing with elementary kids, nor are we dealing with high school students. The middle school student is a unique entity who is going through a tremendous amount of change. They are starting the process of changing from a child to a young adult, physical change, emotional change, more responsibilities, the list goes on. Presently, most of our classes at the middle school are forty-three to forty-four minutes long. With the new schedule, math will be eighty minutes long, and I have not seen, or nor has it been presented to the staff, any research which supports eighty minutes of math at the middle school level. Language arts, my particular subject, will be losing time. Actually, every class will be losing time. So I'll lose approximately fifty minutes per week, which is eleven percent decrease in time. Because of the change in the schedule, I will also be having an increase in class size. Social studies and science, loss of time, approximately twenty minutes per week, but that's ten percent decrease in time. In sixth grade, it's even higher because their present science and social studies class is an hour long and it'll be going to forty minutes. Phys ed, health, foreign language, tech ed, et cetera, losing time. We do need the time in our schedule for remediation and available teachers to provide the remediation in a small group setting, but by having the Trojan block for the entire school at the same time, we are asking a lot from this forty-minute block of time. Large group music instruction, advisory lessons, sixth-grade intro to foreign language, sporadically not as it is presently delivered, gifted remediation, extensions, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech and language services, how can so few specialists deliver to so many during this one block? By having the Trojan block in the middle of the day, we also still have the concern about athletes missing class time, almost an entire period. Usually, they're dismissed thirty minutes, um, when they have, before the end of the day, when they have an away game. At this time, there doesn't seem to be a clear plan for the delivery of special education services. Two options were given, yet, when the schedule was presented to the staff, it was supposedly designed with the historically underperforming students in mind, yet, the IEP subgroup is a huge part of that, um, of that group, so we were shocked that there was not some definitive plan for that. Yes, the middle school need, schedule needs to change, but not what we have been proposed with this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Illuminati.
My name is Robert Illuminati, I teach tech ed and art at the middle school, and on behalf of Unified and Fine Arts, I asked that the school board consider the following questions about the proposed schedule. Does this schedule align with the mission of the Wissahicken School District that is clearly defined and is prominently and proudly displayed on our district website? A mission that speaks to the development of the whole child, a mission that lists math, science, English, world language, health, visual arts, performing arts, and technology, all its core areas. On Thursday, the Wissahicken Schools District will host a seminar entitled Managing Your Mind, a discussion about stress, anxiety, depression, and bullying. With more stress and anxiety weighing on our students, teachers, and parents, is it wise and responsible to exert more pressure on all stakeholders for performance, even at a time when WHS is placed first in the state of Pennsylvania in its performance profile? Is it possible for teachers, students, and parents to produce more? Internal and external pressure is necessary to achieve performance, however, too much pressure has the opposite of the desired effect. We cannot increase the amount of time in a twenty-four-hour day, we can only redistribute it. Does this proposed redistribution make sense? As a staff, we have been hearing that the schedule is good for kids. If that's true, why has there been such a lack of transparency surrounding it? If it's good for kids, why haven't parents seen it? Why are teachers only hearing about it now? Surely, there is a better alternative. In two thousand thirteen, a schedule change was proposed to address science PSSA scores by increasing time in science classes at the expense of language arts. Now, all of the sudden, it's math classes increasing in length at the expense of science and all other curricular areas. Will we change the bell schedule on a reactionary basis to PSSA scores each year? Each time the middle school schedule is revised, Unified Arts and Fine Arts lose, and due to the hands-on nature of our classes, too much of our class time right now is already spent setting up and cleaning up. Individualized instruction and the quality of education will decrease as class sizes increase and instructional time decreases. This schedule contains elements of high school and elementary schedules but does not seem to address the needs of middle school learners. Two-thirds of our middle school leadership has been in the building less than a year and have come from high school and elementary school settings. Is it fair to ask them to fully grasp all of the subtleties and nuances of middle school life in a matter of months and then implement a schedule based on such a small sample size? Instead of listing a litany of statistics about how the arts have a positive and direct correlation to student achievement, in closing, I would ask that the school board and administration consider what impact did Unified and Practical Arts and Music have on your life? How did these curriculums affect your educational career? How did your experiences in these classes shape who you are today? Did they affect your ability and desire to learn about the world, and did they help you learn about yourself? What do you think these classes mean to your children, both today and as they grow? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edward Bray.
My name's Edward Bray, I live in Blue Bell Springs, a community directly adjacent to the Community College, and for thirty-two years I taught for you folks in the middle school. I taught German and French and a few other things, as I, I hopped my dinosaur and rode to school every day. It's delightful to be here. I'm here tonight because I understand that change is coming to the middle school foreign language program. I'm concerned that the program will be modified to accommodate greater instructional time in other subject areas. As a Wissahicken taxpayer, I would like to state that I am opposed to any change that proposes to reduce middle school, the middle school language program as it currently exists. I'm curious, every day I entrust my grandchildren to the care of highly-trained, thoroughly-vetted professional teachers in this school district. They are our local experts, they are invested in the community, and I trust their judgment. I'd like to know, did this idea come from them? Were they consulted in this matter? Did they approve the idea? Local experts. A vast body of research done at major American and international universities, which I'll be happy to supply to you, states that as the world grows smaller every day, instead of reducing foreign language exposure, we should be increasing it. Dr. Judy Wills, a board-certified neurologist, writes in, in U.S. News and World Report, "I advise that learning additional languages as early as possible should commence," I'm sorry, "I advise learning additional languages as early as possible." Not only is the skill easier to pick up on young, it will also boost mental attitude, aptitude during school years, if leading eventually to employment. Children who are exposed to multiple language, languages at an early age averaged higher scores in cognitive performance on tests, uh, displayed better attention focus, less distraction, better decision-making, judgment, and responsiveness to feedback. From the years of experience that I have in the field, I can tell you that the younger a student starts language acquisition, the better their pronunciation is, the closer it is to native. I've been speaking German my, all my life, and I can tell you, I judged that contest that the student referred to at Plymouth White Marsh High School, I judged the German section. While I never ask a contestant's school during the interviews, I have observed a striking difference in the pronunciation between Wissahicken students and those in other schools. Wissahicken students always score at or near the top of schools in Montgomery County. Imagine the advantage they will have if they have more rather than less time with their foreign languages. Research data supports all, supports benefits in four key areas. Personal benefits, an obvious advantage of knowing more than one language is the expanded access to people and resources. Ultimately, knowing a second language can give people a competitive advantage in the workforce by opening up additional job opportunities. Cognitive benefits, students learning a second language exhibit increased cognitive development, the offset of age-related cognitive losses, that's my alley, intelligence, memory skills, and problem-solving ability. Foreign language students exhibit higher academic performance at a college level as well. Academic benefits, studies have found that students who learn foreign languages score statistically higher on standardized college entrance exams than those who do not. For example, the College Entrance Examination Board reported that students who had averaged four or more years of foreign language study scored higher on the verbal section of the SATs than those who had studied four or more years of any other subject. As far as societal benefits, Americans who are fluent in more than one language can enhance America's economic competitiveness abroad, maintain our political and security interests, and work to promote an understanding of cultural diversity within our own country. I've served on a school board, I know how difficult these decisions can be. I also know that sometimes decisions made at an administrative level don't always make it to the board or occupy prime attention. So I ask you in conclusion, did this idea come from our professional staff, our local experts? Did our teachers decide it was to the middle school's advantage to make this proposed change? I would appreciate you looking into this, and as a taxpayer, I would appreciate the courtesy of an answer privately, as, at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Bray, Mr. Scott Flanders.
Thank you for having me the opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm speaking in regards more to the science program. As middle school science teachers, we try to capture the attention and inspire young minds by the use of inquiry hands-on laboratory experiments. These labs help spark the interest of students as they explore the scientific concepts discussed... These labs help spark the interest of students as they explore the scientific concepts discussed in class, providing them the opportunity to face real-world applications and creating meaningful connections. These hands-on learning teaches students to hypothesize ideas, conduct experiments, collect and analyze data, and formulate conclusions. Lab experiments are extremely challenging to complete currently in the given amount of time that we have at the middle school. However, NSTA and other research encourages this form of learning to foster both communication and collaborative skills, developing students to be more confident and competent in the sciences. We all know that data drives the district, and we're looking at what is the best for the students. To the contrary, I believe that the data that we are basing this proposed schedule is not to the best interest of the students. This proposed schedule will cut the amount of instruction time in seventy-five percent of the core classes and only benefit twenty-five percent of the core classes with increased instructional time. Specifically, science will be losing ten percent of instruction time in both seventh and eighth grades and thirty-three percent instruction time in sixth grade. We're also losing one science position, and it'll be eliminated, causing an increase in the teacher-to-student ratio. And that will increase by twenty percent. Numbers don't lie, so statistically, these numbers don't support what is best for students. If you, the school board, are interested in what is best interest of our students, I encourage you to please consider what you've been hearing today with the schedule proposes at the middle school. If we want to provide a quality education for our students at Wesahican Middle School, we need the time to conduct inquiry education, preparing our children for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeannie Hill.
My name's Jeannie Hill, and I'm a learning support teacher at the middle school. This is my fourteenth year at the middle school and my twenty-eighth as a special educator. I appreciate the chance to speak about the new proposed schedule for the middle school and how it might affect students with IEPs. In the current special education model, one team has students who need direct instruction for both math and language arts. And these kids have the same special education teacher for both subjects. The other two teams have kids who need both itinerant and supplemental support. At the moment, there are two possible models for kids with learning differences. Option A proposes that one team has a direct instruction language arts teacher, one team a direct instruction math teacher, and one team has kids who are considered itinerant. There are two concerns with this option. The first is that the kids who have the most needs will be cross-teamed. This runs counter to the middle school model of teaming to support the kids. Teaming and consistency is crucial for posting homework, making connections, and communicating effectively. In addition, special education teachers would not be as informed as to what was going on in the other content areas in which they need to support students. Further, while the department is in the process of choosing a math curriculum for kids in the direct instruction class, we do not currently have an evidence-based curriculum for the direct instruction language arts class. In the second possible model, or Option B, one team would have kids for math and language arts and direct instruction, one team would have the majority of supplemental kids, and one team would have the majority of itinerant kids. The concerns regarding this model are the possibility of special education students receiving a limited amount of in-class support. It is also unclear whether these students would have support in social studies and science under this new model. The students currently do have support in these classes for testing, long-term projects, organization, and reading comprehension activities. Other general concerns about moving away from the current model includes, include loss of academic time to support students on a more individual basis, loss of push and support across all content areas, and lack of clarity and preparation for what the new model might look like. While we're open to the idea that the new schedule could be a great possibility for positive change for our students in special education, we ask that we wait a year to put these changes into place. Waiting would allow us to visit other schools, review and choose a curriculum for direct instruction language arts, and to address the logistical issues such as classroom availability. In essence, it would give us time to choose and implement the best model for our kids. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, Travis Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, administration, and community. My name is Travis Hill, and I'm the band director at Wesahican Middle School. I come before you tonight to represent the concerns of the middle school music department in regards to the proposed new schedule for next school year. I met with Sue Brown, the choral director, and Kathleen Gibson, the strings director, to discuss the proposed schedule and see how we can plan to make it best for all of our students. We have not seen a finished schedule yet, but our concerns are based around what has been presented to us thus far. First, this schedule as proposed will limit our available rehearsal times with the various grades from eight sections to five. Currently, we meet with band, chorus, and strings during the seventh and eighth grade academic and the sixth grade advisory time slots in our six-day rotation. This reduction in available sections will diminish the course offerings at the middle school for musical ensembles. Currently, there are opportunities for all students in their grade-level ensemble, as well as the advanced ensembles known as wind ensemble, select chorus, and select strings. With only five available rehearsal periods, both wind ensemble and select chorus will no longer fit, which will eliminate them from our offerings. Along the same lines, the reduction in available class times will make it almost impossible for our students to be involved in multiple musical ensembles. Currently, we share students between the band, chorus, and strings classes. While students can't be in everything, we have set the schedule to maximize the potential number of ensembles our students can be a part of. We have looked at potential schedules for next year and will, that will minimize conflict, but even with our planning, there are a lot of conflicts between these ensembles. In one instance, students will be unable to be a part of both the Black Dog Jazz Band and the seventh and eighth grade chorus. Our second major concern focuses on the number of student opportunities proposed for the Trojan block. As we've been made aware, Trojan block will be used for the band, chorus, and strings, as well as gifted, remedial support, speech therapy, intervention, enrichment, and sixth grade world language. This has the potential to greatly overwhelm students who are involved in multiple classes, enrichments, and interventions. Just looking at the eighth grade band students with IEPs, fifty-five percent of the class could be affected during our rehearsals. In that same band class, one-third of them have gifted IEPs and could be participating in gifted support during the same time period. It is the opinion of the middle school music department that the proposed schedule will not be in the best interest of our students, who currently represent approximately forty percent of the middle school population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Abby Test.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Abby Test. I teach seventh grade social studies, and I work, live, and vote in the district. I have two sons who graduated from Wesahican High School in 2011 and 2014. They're doing very well, by the way, in large part due to the great education that they received from my colleagues here. As you've heard, the teachers are here because we would like the district to just take a closer look at the new schedule that has been proposed for next year, which includes, among other things, a double period of math instruction for all of our students regardless of whether they need it or not. When instructional time for math is doubled, this additional time comes at the expense of the other areas of study, as you've heard. Members of the social studies department actually asked for additional instructional time in the new schedule, and we were, we were shocked to learn that time for social studies and science and other subjects is actually being reduced. It is not just instructional time that's being lost, though. When more math teachers are needed each period to teach math in double blocks, the number of teachers in other areas of study is also reduced. So, for instance, this year, we have six social studies teachers who teach seventh and eighth grade, and next year, we will only have five. So, what does that mean? In any given year, my colleagues in seventh and eighth grade typically have between one hundred and ten and one hundred and twenty-five students each. But with the new schedule, we'll have more like one hundred and forty-four, which could increase potentially to more like one hundred and fifty-five. The amount of time that each of us will have to devote to each individual student will be reduced, and the quality of social studies education Wesahican provides at the middle school will be diminished. If you consider just one task that a middle school teacher performs, such as grading a project or an essay or a test, with one hundred and ten students, if one of us spends ten minutes grading a persuasive essay, that's eighteen hours and twenty minutes of grading. With one hundred and forty-four students, it increases to twenty-four hours. And that's just one task, and it doesn't include the time spent on so many other things that we do to serve our students. So, I picked up a newspaper the other day, and I read about Marcellus shale gas extraction, fracking, pipelines, eminent domain, Pennsylvania budget crisis, superdelegates, primaries, caucuses, brokered conventions, Supreme Court justice nominations, filibusters, ISIS, a Kierkegaard chemical attack, Angela Merkel, the European Union, Syrian refugees, asylum seekers, and global financial markets. If any of our Wesahican graduates makes sense of any of these terms and topics, there is a high probability that they heard about it in a social studies classroom in our district. But it has been well documented that time allotted for social studies education has already been reduced in school districts across our country. It is not on all the standardized tests, so it takes a backseat. Quoting from a position statement published by the National Council for the Social Studies specifically about the marginalization of social studies at the elementary level, quote, "The social studies are as basic for success as reading, writing, math, and science. If the young learners of this nation are to become effective participants in a democratic society, social studies must be an essential part of the curriculum. The democratic tradition of this country deserves an equal place in the classroom. The founders of this country would expect nothing less." It appears to some of us that our school is becoming a de facto institute for PSSA test preparation, and we think that Wesahican is better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final public comment this evening is Christine DiLoren.
Christine DiLorenis Ambler. You've heard a lot about, you've heard from a lot of teachers this evening. Now, you can hear from a parent. I have one child that went through the middle school and is in ninth grade this year, and I have one child that will be in the middle school in two years. So, this is a very, I'm very invested in this. My daughter spent sixth grade exploring four different languages. We knew going in she was going to pick French. She's had a love of Paris since she was a small child. But, it helped hone her decision and make sure that she knew what she wanted when she went into seventh grade, and she's now successfully in ninth grade French, doing very well. When I talked to her last week when we found out, well, not found out, but I talked to her last week about this, and she was very sad for all the sixth graders that were going to come, that they were not going to get the opportunity to learn Japanese and German and Spanish and French and be able to make a wise choice about which language they wanted to move forward with. My son, he's waving, he's going to be in sixth grade in two years, and I know decision-making isn't his best skill, so he's going to need that time. He's going to need a full quarter with each language to really decide which way he wants to go. In November, when the administration did a presentation and talked about how they were going to take away this sixth grade exploratory program, it was made, the comment was made in passing, it was to accommodate the new schedule. What they didn't say was that they were going to take away time from all of the other classes, all of the other subjects. I would have been up here banging on the podium a lot sooner if I had known that. I need a well-rounded child. If it was up to my son, he'd be sitting in science class all day. And the fact that they're going to take away time away from science is not going to be a good thing for him, but it's also not going to be a good thing for him to sit in math all day either. We need well-rounded children, not just children that can score well on a test. We need well-rounded children that know what it means to be a citizen of the United States and know what the political ramifications of their vote will be when they turn eighteen. We need well-rounded students that know social studies, that know languages, that know English language arts, that know math, too, and they know science and they understand it. And taking away time from all of those other subjects is not the answer. I want my, my, my son to go through the middle school and have a well-rounded education and not just sit through language arts and math. One last thing, my daughter was one of those kids that was in multiple music programs. When she got to high school, she had to pick one, and it hurt to pick one. I really, I'm so grateful that she was able to do chorus and band when she was in middle school and get that, that experience with both of those things before she had to pick one. Don't take that away from all the rest of the kids that come to the middle school.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate all your comments this evening. We're going to continue on with report of the secretary, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. We present for approval the February twenty-second, two thousand sixteen meeting minutes.
They're moved. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the next is just the noting of the next meeting dates, which are March twenty-eighth and April twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, seven thirty PM in the administrative offices. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next, we have report of the treasurer, Dr. Coleman.
There is no report tonight. Thank you.
Next is report of the board president, and I do not have a report this evening. Following is report of the superintendent, Dr. Chris Field.
Thank you. And just a very short kudos to the cast and crew of Burton's this past weekend at the high school. All three, the performances were absolutely fantastic, very high-end quality and very fun for the community to enjoy.
I concur. Next, report of the solicitor, Mr. Walpert.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. I have no report this evening.
We will now move on to report of the committee meetings. We have the communications committee, Mr. Antonio.
Just a quick update that Ms. Rawlings and the administrative team are working on Wisnahan E. Newsletter, which will be a quarterly recap of district highlights and news of interest to the general Wesahican community. And stay tuned for more information on that as it's developed and refined. Thanks.
Thank you. Exciting news from the communications committee. Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mrs. Hayman.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on February twenty-fifth. Thus, of the elementary board, of the elementary board, from the middle school pool, Oreo presented those for discussion at this. That will take place on Thursday.
The public is welcome at that meeting. Next, the finance committee, Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Becker. The finance committee meeting, finance committee met on March seventh here in the administration offices. The next finance committee meeting will occur on April the fourth, six thirty, and all are welcome.
Ms. Walsh, I was trying to scare you. I skipped facilities and transportation. So, next, we have facilities and transportation. Mrs. Walsh.
Thank you. The Facilities and Transportation Committee met on March seventh. Agenda for that meeting, we discussed district-wide project update, a five-year capital plan, and a three-year general fund project update, middle school gymnasium wood floor repair, the auditorium, and central plant township approval fees, and refurbishing the high school weight room. And there was an informational statement about retaliation, energy rebate. The next Finance and Transportation Committee will meet on April 4 at 5:30 PM in the administrative offices, and everyone is encouraged to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Next, IU Legislative Committee, Mr. Stoloff.
Yes, the, thank you. The IU Legislative Committee will meet again on March 16 at 7:30 at the intermediate unit in Norristown.
Thank you, Mr. Stoloff. Next is IU Board of Directors, which is myself. And IU Board of Directors met on February 24, 2016, and you all received your MCIU highlights in your email. I will highlight one special highlight and share that the pre-K count program has commenced. As of Monday, February 29, five pre-K count classrooms are fully operational, delivering high-quality pre-kindergarten programs to 100 appropriate-aged children at no-cost-income-eligible families. And this is all taking place at the Early Learning Academy, 1605 West Main Street in Norristown. We will next meet on March 23, 2016, at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report. Moving on, we have North Monco Technical Career Center, Mrs. Hayman and Mr. Stoloff.
Okay, the Joint Operating Committee will meet on March 21 at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayman. Next, we have Policy Committee, Mr. Stoloff.
Yes, we have several motions to put before the board. One, the first is the recommendation for the approval of the first reading on food and beverage expenditure policy, Document A1. And if I could have a motion for the first reading.
Moved.
Second. Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. Stoloff, will this be subject to a possible minor clarification of language in paragraph one?
Yes. There was some syntactical confusion, at least on my part, that I would like to clear up so that we can treat our, our professional staff, the whole purpose of the motion is to treat our professional staff as professionals. No lobster, but coffee and snacks, I think, is reasonable, and that's what the whole policy is about. Right now, I don't think we're allowed to give them water from a faucet, and that is something that we really want to change. But there are some changes, and that's why we need this motion.
So this is first reading. It's possible it'll be subject to a minor clarification. The motion is.
Yes, I certainly hope so.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay, so the, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion pass.
Okay, the, next is a recommendation for approval of first reading on reverse assessment appeals policy, and that's Document A2. The idea being that we want the assessments for all property in the district to be equitable, and if, when we discover that certain properties have increased vastly in value, that we can seek to have their, their assessments increased so that every, the, the payments to this school district are equitable. So I ask approval for first reading on Document A2, for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, and are there any comments or questions on this policy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion pass.
Okay, next, I ask for approval on the first reading for, on the deletion of the Student Activity Fees Policy and Guidelines to be effective July 1, 2016, as in Document A3.
So moved. Second.
And the purpose for this is to see if we can increase student participation by removing the $50 fee on every student who takes part in any student activity, whether it be one or five. They pay $50, and the general feeling from the administration and many others is that this may be excluding students from engaging completely in their, their life in school. And this is a three-year experiment to see if we can increase engagement by our students in after-school activities. I ask for a motion, which has already been done.
Is there any further discussion on this?
Just a question. What, annually, what's collected in terms of the student activity fees?
Approximately $60,000.
I'll follow up with that question. I applaud the administration for going forward with this, but given that it is approximately $64,000, how are we going to measure whether or not, and I know there's many variables, but how are we going to measure so that we can answer to the district that this reduction in fees, that we're actually making a difference?
We can, we can measure the number of student participants, and then we can decide at the end of the three-year period if the increase, if there is one, is worth $64,000.
And those numbers will be shared at policy, curriculum and technology, where?
Wherever it will be best. Share them everywhere.
Okay, good. All right. Just so that we monitor it and know that this decision was a good one, which I believe it will be, but we do need to measure it. And with that, any other comments? May I have a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Okay, and lastly, the Policy Committee will meet again on March 16 at 5:30 PM in the administrative offices, right here, and all are welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Stoloff. Next, we have committee meeting minutes. I would like to bring forth the motion for approval of the February 25, Curriculum and Technology, February 10, Facilities Transportation, February 10, Finance, February 17, 2016, Policy Committee meeting minutes for Documents A4 through A7.
So moved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next, we have report on personnel, Mrs. Rossi.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. I'd like to request approval of motions A, B, and C for Documents B1 through B3, which include retirements, changes of status, some additional appointments, and some co-curricular appointments, along with some additions to the volunteer list and a request for conference attendance.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossi. We have the motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I have some comments in a salute to those, three of those who are retiring. The first is Nancy Zucaro. I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Nancy's been with the Whistahican School District since 2004, working as a bus assistant and van driver. Nancy has been recognized for being reliable, flexible, and knowing the needs of students on her van. The Transportation Department and the district will certainly miss her. The next is Mark Mulleran. I seem to have been given all the unusual names tonight. I want to thank you, Madam President. Mark has worked with, as a social studies teacher at the high school since 2007. Prior to coming to Whistahican, Mark worked in the Philadelphia Public Schools for many years, and I salute him because that's where I spent, I cut my teeth. He is known as a dedicated, knowledgeable teacher, who has excellent rapport with the students, and he will be missed by the high school staff and, most importantly, students. Last is Patricia Higgins. And Pat has worked as a lunch assistant at Stony Creek Elementary School for the past 16 years. She has been a valued member of the Stony Creek team and is commended for her overall work to ensure a positive learning experience for all students. And I apologize for leaving my voice on tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stoloff. On a personal note, I have to give my gratitude to Mr. Moorehearn. He's a fabulous APUS teacher, who not only taught the kids the facts of US history, but he taught the kids to love US history. Wish them all the best, and everybody all the best. And now, any, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Next, we have report on student and instructional activities, Mr. Abimatt.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. I'm requesting approval of motions 12A through 12E as per Documents C1 through C5. C1, 2, 3, and 5 request approval of extended field trips. Item E, Document C5, was in addition to the agenda and blue-sheeted to members of the board prior to the meeting. Item 12C is a request to use the E and I Cooperative Services for purchase of equipment, and Document C4 is a request to purchase furniture with embedded power supplies in the furnishings for the high school audio and lobby.
So moved.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion pass. Report on plant and equipment, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. Present for approval motions A and B per Document D1 and D2. And as Mrs. Walsh has mentioned, they are for the high school weight training equipment and various approvals needed to progress with the central plant pool project. Thank you.
So moved.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have report on finance, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. We present for approval motions A and B per Document E1. The first is a motion for resolution for North Monco Technical Career Center and the approval of funding for their project. And the second is the extension of Gallagher Benefit Services for the continuation of their health and consulting services contract.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the roof replacement. I can't quite tell where document is for that. I apologize because the numbers are all cut off at the bottom of my document.
It is E, E1.
Yeah, I don't, what's it look like? Because my pages are all cut off.
It's, I believe it's the last document in the board report other than the minutes.
Oh, here we go.
Mr. Honeycutt, while you're looking, would you like me to describe it? Or you, you're okay?
Well, I, I think I just have a question, and I had, I had previously asked a question regarding the concept of the district paying some proportionate share of that expense, and I just need to, need a level of confidence in terms of how the North Monco Technical Center, utilizing respective funds to cover their, I think there may be some differences in terms of how they manage their, their facility needs versus how a standard school might do it.
I'm not quite sure your, your question, whether it's the amount or the fact that we have to pay it all.
I think it's the latter.
I beg your pardon?
The latter, that we have to pay it all.
Okay. We have a number of students, and the way, at the tech school, the way the, the charge is shared among districts, if I'm correct, is based on the value of the real estate in each district. I'm not quite sure. I don't think it involves the number of students that we send to the, to the, to the tech school. And that is one of the, the sad items that I look at every month. I'm one of the liaisons, along with Ms. Hayman, to the, to the North Monco, that we have the smallest number of students going to the tech school of any in the area. And even though the, the tech school has fantastic opportunities for all of our students, but the way the agreement works is we pay based on our real estate evaluation. If we could send more students and convince more, more students, and most importantly, parents, of the extreme value of a, of a tech education, we would get more bang for the buck.
Yeah, Mr. Stoloff, and I apologize for interrupting, but here's, here's kind of conceptually my, my question. So annually, Whistahican school district supports and provides funding to North Monco Technical Career Center, do we not?
Yes.
Okay, so the question is, out of the funding that Whistahican, as well as the other school districts are providing North Monco, why do they come back after a project and asking for additional funds when the, when the funding that we're providing them and the other school districts are providing them shouldn't be, shouldn't cover, or should cover, the cost of any expenses they may incur? I guess that's the concept. Sort of like if, if we go over a budget in a given year, we don't redo the village, we sort of have to plan ahead. I guess that's conceptually why, I understand that we're paying the least amount, $32,000. I don't understand why you have to pay it all.
So I do understand your question, and.
Thank you, Wade. You always seem to be able to understand my questions, which I appreciate.
I, I, I got it. And, and this might be one of the worlds of unfair, but they view this as a large capital project. And they are sort of splitting the baby because what they're doing is they're, I believe, taking, of the project, they're taking $500,000 out of their fund balance, and I believe are funding that portion the way you would think is fair and appropriate, which is to their reduction of fund balance and in the proportion that we are paying, which is in accordance to how many students that we have. And then to Mr. Stoloff's point, the rest of the payment is made almost like it's a large project, and they're borrowing the money, except from, instead of borrowing the money, what they're doing is asking us to pay for it in accordance with the state tax equalization board, which is the part on the top of page two. So they had the ability to do this. They probably have the votes to do it too, because the larger entities are going to benefit based on the fact that they would have the voting proportion, and the more that they can push into this part of the financing, the less they are going to pay, meaning the more we are going to pay. So I think they sort of split the baby on this one so that part of it is fund balance-driven, again, at our rate of 6%, and part of it is going to really be seen more as a larger, long-term capital project and paid at 20%. I'm not saying it's fair, but I think that's the compromise that they met. The VOTEC does, just like we, have the ability to borrow money, and maybe perhaps before you were on the board, they did go through a large renovation. And at that point in time, districts voted to proportionally take on debt for, I think it was like $8 million. So if each one of the districts, or the majority of the districts, vote to take on debt, it would go in accordance with that top percentage on page two. So I think that's how they have split this out and decided to pay for it both ways. We could argue a roof project shouldn't be capital, and it should all be paid out of fund balance. That would be our high-ground moral argument, and truthfully, I think we'd lose it based on the fact that they'd override it and vote it down anyway.
That seems based a little on, we have to plan out financially where we are, our long-term capital needs. They don't.
Right.
I, I, can I interrupt for one second? I did serve on the board for a year at North Monco, and I can tell you from sitting on those board meetings, as Ron and Ronnie would probably be able to tell you, they cut everything that they can cut. When I say that they are using the paper, they use it four times instead of twice, one on each side. Things that they put in place there to try and keep their finances under control, you cannot believe. You'd have to go to one of their meetings, just see how much they cut and how little they spend, and the, the heads that they cut, just try and keep themselves running over there. They really do.
So are they running a fund balance?
They have a, it's my understanding that they have a relatively. They have a, it's my understanding that they have a relatively small fund balance. And, Mr. Chrisfield, Dr. Chrisfield, you attend meetings for that also? You might have more information.
Their operation is almost exclusively tuition-driven, so any organization that has it that way needs to have a fund balance, in case for some reason tuition drops or payments drop off precipitously, and yet they have a lot of fixed obligation. So the auditors will say that an organization that relies on that kind of, not necessarily legal or I should say ulcerative revenue, needs to have a bigger fund balance. Do, do carry a fund balance, they're very careful about sharing with everybody what it is. They get very nervous, like, like other schools that are tuition-driven, very nervous when it falls below a certain level.
Did you say they were nervous about?
No, 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 they're nervous when it goes too low.
Oh.
And are these, are these two motions being voted on together?
They were unless there's a request by the board to break them out.
I, I make a motion that we break them out.
Is that acceptable to the first and secondor, which would be Tracy and Carol? Okay, so we'll have the first motion, which is recommendation for approval of resolution W316 with respect to the 2006 re-roofing project at the North Monco Technical Career Center document per Document E1. We have a motion for that, please?
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passed. Just one no, right?
Thank you. And the second motion is a request for approval of Gallagher Benefit Services as listed on page seven.
Moved.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Next, we have public comments. Are there any further public comments for this evening? Are there any board comments this evening?
Yeah, Dr. Becker, I have a couple of comments. So this evening, earlier, we had an opportunity to hear some feedback from some of the teachers in middle school regarding a change to the middle school calendar for next year, the schedule for next year. And, and, you know, generally, as a board, we try not to get into the weeds or the day-to-day micromanagement of the district and their respective schedules. I think some very interesting points and questions were brought up by, by those that spoke, and I think from, at least from my standpoint, I'd like to hear maybe some of the answers to those. Dr. Abimont and Dr. Chrisfield, if you were able to capture those questions. In the end, we want to make sure we're doing the best for the students. I do agree with some of the points that Ms. De Laurentis made regarding, you know, having well-rounded students, and I'm one of those that could sit in math or science for a long time, but math, I'd probably, my eyeballs would pop out, so, but that's just me. I'm an N of one, and I enjoyed choir growing up, so. But I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we've vetted this thoroughly, that, you know, subject matter experts have been brought in to provide whatever feedback they have, and if in the end, the schedule ends up where it is, at least there's a level of confidence on our part as a board that diligence is done, the adequate questions have been asked.
I have a comment I'd like to make on it, too. My first comment is if we're having this discussion in the curriculum meeting, I know there's a handful of us actually have to get paid to work and aren't able to make a 12 o'clock in the afternoon meeting, maybe this is something that we need to change the time when more people could attend that meeting. And the second comment that I was wondering is I'd like to see what the teachers would actually propose as a change in the schedule, because a lot of them felt like a change needed to be made, but maybe this is not the correct change. So maybe we could see something that the teachers would suggest, saying, "This would be a great move. Why don't we try this?" I don't know how long that would take, but I think that that's something that we should see. So, thank you.
Any comments as well? So first off, is the schedule change that's proposed at the middle school, is that something that we as a board would need to review and vote on? And so I assume it'll come forward once it makes it through committee at some point. And then at that point, I, I assume that we'll have like a presentation that kind of goes into some of the details. Because I like Ms. Walsh, I will not be able to attend the Curriculum Committee meeting that's coming this week, nor any future committee meetings if it's held at 12 noon. And if we are sincere in our desire to have the public participate, as well as possibly teachers or staff to participate in the meeting, then we should consider, at least going forward, having it at a time after 5:00 PM in the evening, or having an additional separate meeting, allow for more public input. Thanks.
Yes, and also, part of the problem, from what I understand it, is, is the odd creature the middle school is. It's partially elementary and partially secondary, and that's created some of the problem. Right now, they have, it's my understanding that they have two bell schedules, and that this causes some confusion. I heard some, someone mention, and I'm not quite sure who did, may have been you, Dr. Chrisfield, that some middle schools do not have bells at all, that the students can, can actually read a clock, and when their period is, is over, they, they leave, whether they are going, whether they are in the elementary grade or the secondary grade. I understand that a lot of confusion comes in when you have, we're trying to ameliorate a number of the problems and still have students able to take care of extracurricular. It is a major problem built on the major problem of the way it is structured, and the fact that it has survived this long, I find rather amazing.
Are there any other comments? I appreciate all the comments this evening. And with that, I recommendation, I make a motion for approval to adjourn the meeting.
Moved.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Good night, everybody.